Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I appreciate that, Melanie. Thanks for keeping us accountable, keeping me accountable. Again, good morning, everyone. We certainly appreciate everyone being here. We certainly, I always like to see the enthusiasm, the chatter, which to me is always a good sign. So I appreciate that and we are glad to be where we are. So with that, I am calling the meeting to order. And at this time, I'd like to call on Pastor Dolman to lead us with the invocation that we can stand. And after him, I will lead us with the pledge. If we can stand or remain standing.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the grace to understand that we need you, to understand the grace that you are the author of life and wisdom. And so, Father, we join our faith, we join our hunger and our desire, our humility this morning for this meeting, for the preceding meetings coming to this day just afar to gather together. But also, Father, even as we do business in this place and lead this place, if you are directing our paths and causing us to have roots and to grow the fruit that you desire in this area. Father, we thank you for all of the cheap designs and the different things that you call for this city and for this family. Father, thank you for the energy, the vitality, the wisdom, the creativity, to raise up and lead a people in a generation as this. We give you thanks and praise for the boldness and the courage. In Jesus' name.
Amen. Let's all face the flag, please. Attention, salute, pledge.
Praise the religions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the Father, with love and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Dolman. You're welcome to stay. However, as I always say, if you leave, it will not be held against you. And I promise you, we still love you. All right, we appreciate it. Thank you so very much. At this time, council, I would like to call on our city manager, Mr. Wallace Hunter, and our HR director, Stephanie Chesstains, to do one of the highlights, which we always say, is to say a sincere thank you to the people who's giving all their time, a lot of their time for the service of this community. Ms. Chesstains?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This is a highlight for us. This is an opportunity for us to publicly recognize and thank our employees and the hard work and dedication that they put in each and every day and the performance of their duties. We have a lot of combined years of service in the room this morning, some of which will be losing at the end of this month. We've got our three from the fire department will be retiring at the end of this month. But I know that they've poured into their crews and the ones that work under them to be leaders in the department and come up and be employees at the same caliber and level that these three gentlemen are. So we wish them all the best. We'll get to them last, save the best for last. So we'll start with our police department. We have Corporal Walsh from Hoffman with five years of service.
Congratulations. You got at least twenty more to do now.
If you want to, or you just technically can't.
Now, Mr. Palmer, you know the president has said you got to say something now.
I just want to say I'm very thankful for the opportunity to provide for my family while also serving citizens of Phoenix City. There's really no better feeling than helping some people that are in need. So I hope to continue this for as long as I can.
Appreciate it. At least twenty more. They keep getting the microphone, I think.
With our utilities department, we have Ms. Shirley Taylor with ten years of service.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure working here. I'm proud to be part of the city of Phoenix.
Well, we appreciate you and we want you to do at least fifteen more.
Oh, I should have cut that down just a little bit.
Thank you, thank you so much. You can go stretch it to twenty now.
I'll do better.
Just hold it to yourself, huh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Also, with our utilities department, Ms. Winsome Fisher with ten years of service.
I must say thank you for this wonderful, wonderful small town, big city, for employing me, as he said, probably provide for my family. And I'll give you another fifteen more.
There you go. And we are too big to be small, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, we get to our fire department. We have Sergeant Eddie Miles with twenty-five years of service.
You go way by it.
I'm gonna try to speak, so just not cry.
That's all right.
I'm fully appreciative of y'all. Since befriended my other, you know, it's just y'all's great leadership that afforded me the opportunity to be able to provide for my family and work and have a job. And it is a blessed, y'all, I'm truly blessed. And I appreciate all your service, you know, and the hard work. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Also, with the fire department, we have Captain Timothy Davis with twenty-five years of service.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the city for giving me the opportunity. Twenty-five years ago, you know, I was telling Chief Hunter, you know, you don't really see light at the end of the tunnel until it gets close. And then you got to make a decision what you want to do. But it's been a very rewarding career for me. And I would encourage any young person that's wanting to start a new career, come down and apply.
We appreciate it. Thanks.
And also, with our fire department, we have Captain Scott Singletary with twenty-five years of service.
Yeah, one last time. It's been a great twenty-five years. I really enjoy working for the city, working for this city. Appreciate you, appreciate you. I'll continue to be an advocate for this city, assure you of that. Best job in the world.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Seven-five years.
Three years.
Seven-five years.
We've been here since before, right?
Been together a long time. How many years is that, that group right there? Oh, no.
Hundred and ten years right there, hundred and ten years, everybody.
I like that quick.
Mayor, I'd like to ask quickly, Mr. Hunter, would you sit down? Those guys right there, you all came up together. You were the chief at that time, sir?
No, I hired them in a training office. We trained all of them.
You trained all of them?
I worked with Tim's great uncle. I worked with his daddy, worked for his daddy. I worked for his second cousin, Chief Shelton. Worked with them. I was in Kmart management at the same time I was working here. And as I see, was our office manager. So they've been around me all this life.
Okay.
Scott watches kids. Eddie, Eddie's sister worked for us, also worked in the police department. So that family's there. Scott had watched his kid grow up when he came up from Columbus. So it's been, been really wonderful watching people develop and bringing them through and staying here long enough to see them through. And like I said, I was very, very close to it with Tim's father. You know, we trained, we worked for a few places. So it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a good thing. It's a good thing to stay and see them fulfill their career, you know, at the end of minds, too. I'll be joining y'all soon to get you this.
We don't let him go. Thank you.
We had one other employee that wasn't able to be here, William Allen with our utilities department. I have his team here in the works, too. Make sure we give them our congratulations and thanks.
Thank you, Stephanie. Good job. And to all the recipients that today, thank you all for setting a great example for longevity and looking at the prize of being able to provide for your family. But even also important is to provide for these citizens. So we truly, truly sincerely thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Let's give them a hand again. At this time, council, I'd like to call on Mrs. Lee for the reading of a proclamation recognizing Judge Michael J. Bellamy. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the highest commendation is herein conveyed to the Honorable Judge Michael J. Bellamy of Russell County, Alabama, in recognition of his outstanding record of achievement and dedicated service to the citizens of Phoenix City and Russell County, Alabama. And whereas Judge Bellamy is retiring after having served forty-six years to the community. In those forty-six years, Judge Bellamy served as the Assistant Russell County District Attorney in 1977, was appointed as the first black district court judge in Russell County in 1998, and elected without opposition in 2000. Judge Bellamy was appointed as the first black circuit court judge in 2013 and the first black presiding circuit judge of Russell County's 26th Judicial Court in 2014. And whereas Judge Bellamy graduated from Mother Mary Mission in 1966 and South Gerard High School in 1970, Judge Bellamy received his Bachelor of Science degree in political science from Tuskegee Institute and his Juris Doctor degree from Southern University School of Law. And whereas Judge Bellamy is a true trailblazer who paved the way in his prospective role to change the course of history in our community by introducing several programs to the community, including Russell County's first Adult Drug Mental Health Court and Juvenile and Family Drug Court Program. Judge Bellamy served for fifteen years in the United States Army Reserve as captain and platoon leader. He has received several awards to include, that are not limited to, the Howell Hefflin Award, the National Trio Achievers Award, the Hometown High Achievers Award, and the Chattahoochee Valley Boy Scouts of America Distinguished Citizen Award. And whereas Judge Bellamy is a member of Franchise Missionary Baptist Church, having contributed to the church body as deacon, trustee board, missionary board, and jail ministry. He is a devoted husband to wife Florence Weeks Bellamy and devoted father to four children, Christie, Leslie, Michelle, and Joseph. And whereas the city of Phoenix City is grateful to Judge Bellamy for his dedication and commitment to the community, for his strong sense of justice, excuse me, fairness and respect for all, Judge Michael Bellamy has been a true inspiration and role model to many. Now therefore, I, Eddie, and Lo, as mayor of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, and on behalf of my fellow council members, to hereby commend Judge Michael J. Bellamy for his commitment and many years of service to Phoenix City and do further proclaim this the seventh day of March 2023 as a day to honor Judge Michael J. Bellamy and do hereby request that all privileges and honors are shown to him on this his day.
Thank you, Lo. On behalf of myself and this council, it gives a great pleasure to be able to give you this proclamation. But let me say this, I want to caveat this. If we notice how everyone spoke highly of how well they've been trained and been able to retire. Now, he started as the city judge in 1982 to 1998, which is sixteen years. Ninety-six, fourteen years. But let me say this, he's been a very successful judge even after he left. But guess where? He got his training where? Here in Phoenix City. So Judge, we appreciate you so much and thank you for what you've done.
Thank you. Please be seated, man.
You got your training from here now.
I got a lot of training. First off, thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, council persons, officers of the city. That point is about, city was not in there. In 1982, I was a young, young attorney. I don't think Mr. Graham was an attorney in 1982, where he became a lawyer. Eighty-two, you were? But he and I met when he was a juvenile probation officer. I almost did not accept the position of city judge. I almost didn't do it in 1982. And the reason I almost didn't do it is because when they offered me the job, they cut the salary in half. Have y'all done that to anybody else?
No.
What I have tried to tell you when I asked for most of you in is to do justice, love and mercy, and walk on. What some person thought might have been a deterrent and might have caused me not to accept the position, but I knew the only way you get judicial experience is by being a judge. So I suffered it to be so and took half the salary. I was blessed to have a clerk, Mr. Wilkes. I think this is, is this building name? Oh, this. Yeah, Mrs. Wilkes was a tremendous blessing to me. He helped me to become the kind of judge I am this day. I was a young attorney and, you know, sometimes we get out of law school, we think we know everything. He helped to train me and he trained me very well. So I thank the city for this proclamation. I thank the city for giving me the opportunity to serve. But in the future, make sure you do justice, love mercy, and also to all those who may come after me. Finally, after 1996, when I did not win any election, I ran for judge, offered myself for service. I did not win. And I decided I'd get out of politics. I admire all of you and those who came to retirement. I had to stand and commend all politicians because no one knows that you have sacrificed to do what you do. And I commend you all. And I decided I was going to be out of politics and make money. And I did well. Lord bless me. I found another building and what have you. But there are two people that encouraged me to do it again. Your mayor, my neighbor Eddie Lo, and Billy Jackson. Every time I would see those two gentlemen, you know, Judge, you need to run for judge again. And while I was doing the jail ministry, telling people that sometimes the Lord tells other people what they have in mind for you, I told those fellows in jail, I said, guess what? I got to run for judge again. I qualified to run and did not have to run, got appointed. And the Lord blessed me with every other election. I was not, haven't had any opposition for running again and again. So I thank you for the time, the opportunity, and the experience that the city gave to me and for this resolution. And thank you for your encouragement over the years to do it again. God bless you and keep you. Mr. Graham and I, we were much, well, he's getting smaller now, too. I'm working on that. We were younger, we used to play racquetball at the YMCA. And he didn't believe that black folks had bruises. He had a few and I had a few, too. We were good.
Judge Bellamy, Judge Bellamy, one moment. Mayor, in the way of a meeting, this is your meeting. May I do a point of privilege to get a photo with Judge Bellamy? If you don't mind.
No, not at all.
And I would get one with you because you live in my district.
You got some more water? I appreciate you all.
We don't crop it anyway.
See, Mr. Warren, see volunteers. And in my retirement, I intend to continue to do especially courts. I would work today to help the other judges who've helped me over the past years. It's for them to. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, thank you, Mark.
Thank you all so very much. Thank you. Thank you, Judge. Proceeding on, council, let me, let them get back to the seats. Proceeding on, council, under the city clerk, at this time, council, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the regular scheduled meeting minutes for February 21st work session as well as February 22nd council meeting. And then the pledge of the council, since we were all there, at that time, I would like to ask that we have a motion for this. They have a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Please motion to me. All right, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council, thank you, Mrs. Lee. Proceeding on, council, on the city council, are there any unfinished business at this time? Okay, since there is not, we will proceed under the resolutions. And with administration, we have Resolution Number 2023-46 to be ratified in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to sign a proposal with Proshot Concrete Incorporated to perform emergency repair work to a failing stormwater pipe at 1811 16th Place in an amount not to exceed eighty-two thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. Mrs. Lee?
Yes. Whereas the city of Phoenix City is proposing to repair a failing stormwater pipe lying underneath the house located at 1811 16th Place. And whereas the failing pipe has caused damage to the foundation of said house. And whereas it is necessary that this work be performed as expeditiously as possible to prevent any further damage. And whereas Proshot Concrete Incorporated has submitted a proposal for this required emergency work in an amount not to exceed eighty-two thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council, the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to sign a proposal with Proshot Concrete Incorporated to perform emergency repair work to a failing stormwater pipe at 1811 16th Place in an amount not to exceed eighty-two thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. Passed, proven, adopted this first day of March 2023, ratified the seventh day of March 2023.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee. Council, we've heard the resolution. This time, I'd like to ask the council for a motion, please. May I have a motion to ratify?
Motion to ratify.
All right, motion, Councilman Bailey and second, Councilman Day.
That's fine.
Are we have that, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir.
Council, any comments or discussion?
Yes, sir. I know in normal circumstances that we normally get three B's, but this is something, like you said, emergency, we don't have to go that route. Is that right, Mr.?
That's correct. And when the only people to do is judge is around here.
Okay, okay. That was mine. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Day.
One other thing, too. Can we tell everybody when this house is built on top of this pipe? How many years it's been?
Most definitely. Most definitely. Nineteen sixty, A and B's going to be concerning the same.
Right.
So do you want to wait after we do B? Or do you want us to do it now, go over it now?
Doesn't matter.
Because both of these two.
Both of them going to relate to each other?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and do B. So we have the motion in the second. And we, B is one that's following. So at this time, council, we would like to call on Mrs. Lee for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now proceeding on, council, on the administration, is Resolution Number 2023-47 to be ratified in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to sign a contract with AFS New Co LLC to repair the foundation to the property located at 1811 16th Place in an amount not to exceed four thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City, excuse me, whereas the city of Phoenix City is proposing to repair the foundation to the property at 1811 16th Place. And whereas it is necessary that this work be performed as expeditiously as possible to prevent any further damage. And whereas AFS New Co LLC has submitted a contract for this required emergency work in an amount not to exceed four thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council, the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to sign a contract with AFS New Co LLC to repair the foundation to the property located at 1811 16th Place in an amount not to exceed four thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. Passed, proven, adopted this second day of March 2023, ratified the seventh day of March 2023.
Okay, council, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to ratify. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to ratify.
All right, that's a motion ratified. Now, Mr. Day, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Carter. Almost there. Almost there. Call me second. So we have the motion and we have the second. So with that, at this time, Mr. Hunter, per the question Mr. Bailey asked.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Bailey, this house was built in nineteen sixty. Obviously, the pipe was in the ground prior to that or unless the contractor covered it up themselves. So we didn't have any inspection reports or anything about that. So we get a phone call from a citizen saying, hey, y'all have a storm drain up underneath my house and now one of the columns is failing. Pipe's been there for quite some time. It's not unusual for it to start, you know, deteriorating. So that's the problem that we have. We went in and tried to figure out what is the best way to do this. We worked with the building department, you know. So we've got to rebuild the column. So that's what the AFS contracts for. But at the same time, we've got to go back in and prevent the pipe would deteriorate anymore. So it is a small pipe, it's an eighteen-inch pipe. So it's a special inline slip line that we've got to do. But it's the least invasive, you know, and to try to keep the house.
But at the same time, we're trying to purchase the property.
Yes, uh-huh. Mr. McDo.
We are trying to purchase.
That's correct.
Because even if we do this fix, there's still going to be a storm line up underneath that house. So it wasn't an addition to the house or anything like that. It was when the house was originally built, it was built over the pipe.
So if we can purchase the property, we won't have to do any of this. We just need to get this in place, just in case. So if, if the offer is accepted, we can do that. Then we can rebound, try to make sure that's not done. But I want everybody to understand, this is something that we inherited. This was, I was one year old when this was done, or before. If I was done.
This was a sixty-year-old.
That was a long time ago. I was born in fifty-nine. This was sixty. So you think about it, and that's why it's so important for people to follow the instructions of our code enforcement and our engineering department and to make sure that is taken care of and people understand that because these are the type of things that councils inherit.
That's right.
You know, things go on. So it's very important for people to understand that.
How did they figure out? I mean, who brought the pipe to the city's attention? I mean, I know they saw the foundation probably cracking. And how, but how did they figure out there was a pipe under that?
So there's a storm inlet in the street right in front of the house. So if you go to the storm inlet and then the gentleman went to the other side of it and they sort of did a line of sight, okay, well, it's got to be going up underneath the house.
Right.
And we came in, our utility department came in and they televised the line for us and it's definitely underneath the house.
Well, that'll let the houses start.
Yeah, the column, they started to see cold and then one of the columns just completely failed.
Yes.
Well, that just, go ahead.
I was going to ask, this a crawl space house? It wasn't on slab or nothing, is it?
No, ma'am, it's crawl space. It's a very tiny crawl space, but it is crawl space.
One thing we take away from this, it was built sixty years, probably sixty years ago, you said. I built in nineteen sixty.
Built in nineteen sixty.
I want the citizens to understand it's definitely a house on this watch right here. And one of the wise thing that we are doing, Mr. Hunter, as you said, we try to purchase that house because we have possibility of future things going on with it as well.
That's correct. If we want to make sure nothing happens, if we can, get it and make sure we move it out of the way because. That's correct, if we want to make sure nothing happens, if we can, get it, and make sure we move it out of the way, because, um.
Could cause problems in the future.
These procedures have changed, and a lot of people.
For the better.
Working for us for much.
For the better.
For much better, you know, it's a lot of things involved, and why it's happened. Because it shouldn't have happened, even then.
Oh, no. Thank you, man.
Thank you, Ange, thank you, Mr. Hunter, Mr. Bailey, and Mr. Day. With that, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and proceeding on, counsel, on the administration, is a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and city manager to enter into an agreement with the state of Alabama, acting by and through Alba for the resurfacing of Fourth Avenue from Idol Iowa Drive to Sixteenth Avenue, project number STPPC dash five seven two one, CPMS, reference number one zero 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 seven three eight three six, and one zero 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 seven three one seven six. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Be it resolved by the city council, the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, as follows. One, that the city enter into an agreement with the state of Alabama, acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation relating to a project for the resurfacing of Fourth Avenue from Idol Iowa Drive to Sixteenth Avenue, project number STPPC five seven two one, CPMS, reference number one zero 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 seven three eight three six, and one zero 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 seven three one seven six. Number two, that the agreement be executed in the name of the city by the city, mayor and city manager, for and on its behalf. Number three, that the agreement be attested by the city clerk, and the official seal of the city be affixed thereto. Be it further resolved that upon the completion of the execution of the agreement by all parties, that a copy of such agreement be kept on file by the city clerk. Passed, proven and adopted this seventh day of March twenty twenty-three.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Councilwoman Carter, and second, Councilman Day. All right, we have there, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir.
We have the motion and the second. At this time, are there any comments or discussion? Okay, if not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, counsel, we have a resolution in reference to the satisfaction of special assessment on property located at one nineteen fourteenth Court, Edna R. Talbert, Edall, R.E.M., Jimmy Roll, owners. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two seventy, adopted on the seventh day of December twenty twenty-one, affix the cost for the demolition of an unsafe structure at one nineteen fourteenth Court, Phoenix City, Alabama, owner being Edna R. Talbert, L.E. Edall, R.E.M., Jimmy Roll. A special assessment was filed against the property taxes in the amount of four thousand two hundred dollars to be collected by the Russell County Revenue Commissioner. Said special assessment having been recorded in volume one forty-five, page seventy-four, in the office of the Judge of Probate of Russell County. And whereas the full amount of four thousand two hundred dollars was paid to the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, on February the third, twenty twenty-three, and said special assessment is entitled to be removed. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby constitute and appoint the Judge of Probate of Russell County, Alabama, as its true and lawful attorney, for and in its name to enter in the margin of the records where said special assessment is recorded, for satisfaction thereof, hereby ratifying and confirming any and all acts of said attorney in fact in and about said premises. Be it further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Revenue Commissioner of Russell County to release said special assessment placed on property. Passed, proven and adopted this seventh day of March twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. This time I'd like to ask this council for a motion, please, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, may I have a motion from Councilman Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day. Comments or discussion? Okay, if not, any, call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, counsel, on the Engineering and Public Works Department, is a resolution in reference to a one and a bid to Robinson Paving Company for bid E two three dash oh one, hot mixed asphalt paving, roadway, drainage, and city facility and property improvement. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas the city council of Phoenix City, Alabama, has solicited sealed bids for bid E twenty-three dash zero one, hot mixed asphalt paving, roadway, drainage, and city facility and property improvements as required under Alabama bid law. And whereas Robinson Paving Company has submitted the only bid meeting specifications. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, accept this bid from Robinson Paving Company. Passed, proven and adopted this seventh day of March twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution. This time, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Councilman Day, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. We have the motion and the second. Counsel, are there any comments or discussion? Okay, if not, any, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, on the Utilities Department, counsel, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and city manager to accept a quote from Southern Rewinding Industrial Sales and Services to provide and install a new pump along with reconditioning the existing motor in an amount not to exceed fifty-one thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-six cents. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas, section thirty-nine dash two dash two of the Code of Alabama allows for the warding of public works contracts without solicitation of sealed bids or in case of an emergency affecting public health and safety. And whereas the Phoenix City Water Filtration Plan experienced a mechanical failure with a pump at the Raw Water Pumping Station, and it is necessary that the pump be replaced immediately. And whereas a quote was received from Southern Rewinding Industrial Sales and Services in the amount of fifty-one thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars fifty-six cent for replacement pump, reconditioning of existing motor, and complete installation of pump and motor. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to accept a quote from Southern Rewinding Industrial Sales and Services to provide and install a new pump along with reconditioning the existing motor in an amount not to exceed fifty-one thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars fifty-six cent. Passed, proven and adopted this seventh day of March twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee, get you a little drink of water.
Yeah, allergies.
Counsel, all of us have heard the resolution, at this time, I'd like to ask this council for a motion, please, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Carter, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bailey. Counsel, are there any comments or discussion?
If I can, two or three questions. Uh, first, what's the new pump cost? I know it's gotta be very expensive.
Well, this is the pump that the motors have been rebuilt, new pump's gonna be somewhere around forty something thousand dollars, I don't have the exact listing of it.
Right.
Come on, come on up, uh, Mr. Wood.
And I just wondered, how, how long do these, how long do these motors work on the, I mean, I'm sure it's probably how hard they have to work is how long they're gonna work, but if that makes sense to you, I'm sure that has something to do with the life of them, but I mean, do they last, usually last five years, ten years, twenty years, you know?
A motor could last longer than that, Councilman Bailey, now, I can't give you the exact number of how long one will last, but for these river pump, uh, station pumps we're speaking of, they'll last longer than ten years.
You're good.
Because we got, uh, annual PM that we do on our motors and pumps. And long as we continue to do that, we'll get the life expectancy of one of those pumps and motors a lot longer than they do, then we can budget.
Right, I just want everybody to, you know, to understand that, you know, we always try to do the best y'all do, everybody in the city, with, uh, getting as much as you can out of any piece of equipment, whether it be a truck, whether it be a backhoe, whether it be a pump on a motor, uh, that, you know, that's what y'all do. You service them very well, you take care of them very well, you use them correctly, and try to get them to last as long as they can, and that saves everybody money. But I was just, I'm just curious as to what, you know, a new one might run, if y'all had investigated or whatever. I'm sure it's four or five times more than what it costs to get this thing fixed and repaired, that would have to make perfect sense.
Well, this is for a new pump and the rebuild of the motor.
Right. All that, yeah, right, okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wood, appreciate it. Any other comments or discussion, counsel? If not, uh, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, counsel, next, we have itemized statement of expense. The first one is fire department, William Farah, in the amount of nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. And counsel, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of that expense, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Councilman Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day. Okay, this time, counsel, we, we have the motion and the second, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, counsel, on itemized statement of expense, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of James McWilliams in the amount of eighteen dollars and ninety-six cents. I asked to be, uh, asked for a motion for approval, both of these persons has been going through the EMT training. Uh, so with that, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the expense of eighteen dollars and ninety-six cents for James McWilliams.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Motion to approve.
Motion, uh, Councilwoman Carter, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day. Okay, we have the motion and the second, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, counsel, on the license department, excuse me, license application. This is a first reading. It's an application for off-premise beer license and off-premise wine license submitted by Zahata Galapati Fervasa LLC doing business as Lucky Store located at three twenty-two Tenth Avenue South, Suite B, Phoenix City, Alabama. And, uh, please forgive me if I mispronounced the name, uh, but I did do the best I could.
I thought you did pretty good.
So with that, I'd like to call on the clerk for the first reading, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. I hope I do as well as you do. Um, the first letter's from our police department assistant chief, George Stalinger. Um, I have received these applications for off-premise beer as well as off-premise wine. I have no objection to the issuance of these licenses to the applicant based upon review of the criminal background investigation. The second letter is from fire chief, Chris Kennedy. This letter's in reference to the application submitted by Zahata Galapati Fervasa LLC doing business as Lucky Store located at three twenty-two Tenth Avenue, Suite B, Phoenix City, Alabama. This applicant has applied for off-premise beer and off-premise wine licenses. An inspection has been conducted, and this facility meets the fire code requirements for this type of occupancy. The last letter is from the building department, signed by Ray Rogers, deputy building official. This letter's in reference to the application submitted by Zahata Galapati Fervasa LLC doing business as Lucky Store located at three twenty-two Tenth Avenue South, Suite B, for off-premise beer and off-premise wine licenses. This facility meets the building code requirements. This office has no objections to the approval of these licenses.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've all heard the reading of the, the first reading of the, uh, the placed on first reading. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the put-on first reading.
Motion to approve, first reading.
All right, Councilman Day, we have the motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Okay, and comments, questions, or discussion?
Uh, yes, sir, ma'am, I've been in that business for quite a few, quite a bit, you know. I'd like to ask this question, I know you've been, had those licensed for numerous years. Is that the, uh, same, uh, destinies would be from the church down to that building?
No, sir, Mr. Day.
I, he, I know you had him quite a few years.
Yes, sir, it, it's been there for quite a few years, used to, in the past, there was a stipulation that maybe five hundred, five hundred feet from a, from a worship service or daycare center, and all, the state legislation, uh, replaced that, uh, room. I wanna say it was roughly two thousand, two thousand one, something like that. Uh, and they removed that stipulation.
Okay, thanks, sir.
So now there's no stipulation happening.
Obviously, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Day, thank you, Mr. Rogers. Okay, counsel, we thank you all so much, I, I, I would like to ask the counsel this, I, uh, if, if, once we get to this point, uh, I always ask the counsel if there's anything, uh, they would like to say or add or take away, but I would ask that you, uh, give me the allow to be able to go first today. And my reason for that is that, uh, I want to be very clear and very, very, very much to the point. Uh, I think what I'm going to say and what happened and took place was inappropriate, disrespectful, and was not, not a code of ethics.
So we need to take the vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, call for the vote.
Yes. Um, Councilmember Day?
Thank you, Togga.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess you can kind of tell, it's, it's kind of been on my mind and been kind of eating at me to tell you the truth, but, uh, that was an event that was held, uh, that, uh, a group that called this meeting is, called it for the purpose of trying to come to a solution of some of the violence that has been happening, and I'm going to say our region. Uh, and it was held here in Phoenix City, I'm not saying that we haven't had some issues, but I can tell you they've been very minimum, and one is too many, let me declare that. But as I was stating, it, it, it was very disrespectful, wasn't a code of ethics, and it was just, in my opinion alone, and I know it's my opinion. This meeting was held in, uh, for the purpose of trying to, as I stated, to come to a conclusion of some of the, the things that was taking place. The first thing that we all need to realize is that this council and all of us was elected by majority of the people in this community. We have a great team. The thing that was disrespectful, myself as force the mayor, not Eddie Low, but the title, let me declare that, was not asked to come to this meeting because it was stated that the mayor or the city manager or the chief of police was not there. It was stated that we should have been there, and that is true, we were not there, we were not asked, we did not know anything about it. But anytime there's something in the community, at least the municipality should have the option to be able to, to declare or disclose whether we are being proactive in something, or what are we trying to do to mitigate problems that may be occurring. That did not take place. Even if the mayor, not Eddie Low, it's, 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 listen, it, it's about the position. Even if the mayor was not asked to be there, at least the city manager and the chief of police should have been asked to be there. Even if the city manager and the mayor was not asked, at least the chief of police should have been there. And this is an issue dealing with violence in this region, or per se, as the meeting, this, this, the city. Now that's disrespectful. We did not know anything about it, there were people saying that we should have been there, and that is true. But we did not know about it. And this is second time something like this has happened. The second time, am I right, Mr. Hunter?
That's correct.
Am I right, uh, chief? The second time, without disclosing to any of the municipality to be able to clarify some things, to find out exactly what the city is doing to help mitigate whatever problem that you may think is taking place. That was wrong. Now, it appears that, and, and I want to be very direct, it appears that there could be a conquering by dividing and concocting to be able to put people in position to run for these positions, which is, that's good and fine. But it's not the appropriate way to do, or to come in this gig the right way. Because if you're not doing the right in the beginning, it's hard pressed to believe that you're gonna do it right if you are elected. It's hard to believe. And it appears that they are a movement of trying to saltate this, this council. It appears that. It really appears that they're trying to make this council ineffective and not being able to do what we need to do, and that is wrong. And I just wanted to get that off of my chest because it has been, been, been gnawing at me that the code of ethics or respect should always be followed. And if you have any council member who's not doing that, then we don't need to be here. And if there seems to be some type of concorting, that's wrong. Because this is not a sit, this is not an easy gig. Am I right?
Right.
You're absolutely right.
It's not easy. So I did want to say that, uh, because it's wrong. At least have the chief there. And I did hear and understand, whether it's true or not, that there were some people in law enforcement that was there but just showed up to be able to make sure the message gets out clearly and correctly. But our chief or our city manager did not have that opportunity. And this is the second time something like this has happened. So I just wanted to get that off of my chest because it has been gnawing at me, uh, over the whole weekend. And, 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 and if I died today, I want people to realize that I was not the type of person to throw a rock in either hands. So with that, anything counsel wants to say?
Uh, yes, sir, mayor, uh, as I listen very diligently what you have elaborated on about the meeting, I had the opportunity to attend that said meeting. Uh, I was invited a couple of weeks ago, and I did go down there, and you're correct, there was some, uh, folk from shared department, DA's office, and other, uh, departments here in the county spoke, and I, I, I sat through the whole meeting until they got down to dismiss, there were some issues, uh, came forward, and I sat there and listened very diligently. And, uh, as I said, I had to leave because I had a call from the house and I had to leave at the end, but I stayed. And I, what was on my mind as I was sitting there, mayor, I'm just wondering, where is the mayor, where is my city official? That's what I'm standing, sitting there wondering, I see the county, some of the county folks there, but where is my folks? Uh, I don't know why I got in, I guess I got invited because they in my district down there, mayor, and I had the opportunity to attend that meeting. Uh, that's one of the items. And one other thing, mayor, while I am speaking at this time, uh, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all those who came to the locally elected fellowship luncheon, which we had a real nice turnout at the time. And I'm gonna thank all the participants on that luncheon as well. Thank you very much. That's all I have, mayor.
I appreciate that, Mr. Day, but I believe, I believe, I believe that it was done designedly. I truly believe that. Now, I, and if I'm wrong, forgive me, but I do believe it was designedly done that way for concocting and also to be able to certify this government or this council. That's, that's what I believe.
Well, mayor, like I said, I, I, I can understand why we had no, uh, city official there, except me, you know, I'm just wondering why, since a, a, a program of that magnitude, yeah, that magnitude, what it consists of, we should have had, uh, the city official, the police chief, city manager, what have you.
At least the chief.
Yeah, we should have had. Uh, I think the NWCP.
Yeah. All right, okay. I'll, I'll wait for my turn.
But again, I do believe that it was, oh, no disrespect, but I do believe it was designed that way. And I know I keep saying this, but I do believe that they are trying to certify this council and this government.
Well, it was designed to talk about crime.
Yes.
So it would have been only correct whether any of us were asked, the chief most definitely should have been asked, sheriffs, DAs, everybody involved in anything criminal activity, from the prosecution to the arrest, to the judges. Any of them, everybody though should have been invited, all the way down to the judges at sentencing, all the way through to where they could talk about laws being stricter, adding penalties to gangs and things of that nature, whatever, whatever needed to be talked about could have been discussed amongst the people that are the ones out there leading, you know, the way to keep our city safe and our community safe. And for us not to be invited, it's directly what the mayor says, it sounds like it was done intentionally.
They're trying to start the fire.
My opinion too, I really do believe.
Really trying to start the fire, this, this, this council.
Well, at the risk of being, they've done it again, I, uh, I understand what the mayor said, and he said too, Mr. Bellwether, I could understand that as I was there sitting and looking and observing, I, you know, the county, the DAs, sheriff, all those folks was there, where is my city official? Not knowing that the city official was not invited, the only city official they invited was me.
We, we, I didn't have any clue, Mr. Holland, did you, or Mr. T?
No.
Did you?
No, no.
So.
No, no, sir.
Now, that's wrong. That's, that's just, that's pathetic.
Well, it's, it, it's, I'll give anybody else.
And counsel poll.
I, I do have a couple of things, if I may, mayor.
Yes.
Okay. Um, first of all, I wanna just congratulate the, um, city employees for their outstanding service, um, on the fire department, seventy-five years collectively, uh, to date. So it shows that the city is worthy, the city is, uh, it, it's not just a job, it's a career for individuals. So congratulations to those, um, that have received their five-year increments of service. We appreciate you, and we can't thank you enough for the work that you continue to do. Um, in, in honor of, um, the retiring first black judge and first black, um, city judge, Michael Bellman, we congratulate you again. Um, he just shared something about when he was first, um, asked to do this, um, the city judge, how they cut the salary, whomever they are, but he had the notion of serving. And so he said he continued to accept the job because it would give him the experience to, uh, embark upon what he has done for these forty-seven years. So Judge Bellman, we thank you, we thank you for your service, and again, uh, you are the trailblazer, uh, for others to follow, and we appreciate you, um, for all the work that you've done in the, uh, court system. And lastly, if I may, uh, we, um, set out to do a, a suit-up drive, and we collected clothes all through the month of February, and on March one, we had the official handover of the items that were collected, um, all the way to making the, uh, the printouts, um, the, the, uh, so the seller who created the, uh, the flyer from, uh, Ms. Shannon's office, the city clerk's office, who made copies of the flyer, thank you, thank you, uh, for the council who supported this event, um, and, and to the community, they just poured out donations. We had a goal of collecting one hundred suits, whether it be, um, a, a jacket and a skirt, or a dress, or a blouse and a skirt, something that would be two-piece to make a suit. Our goal was one hundred. We exceeded that goal for over five hundred suits. Um, so again, a big thank you, a big, we, I, I, I would just feel a gratitude, uh, from, from the, uh, community for, um, donating, um, but we exceeded the goal of one hundred, so we thank you, thank you, thank you. And as we continue to work hard in the community to make this, this council, to make this a better place to live, worship, and play, we commemorate March as being Women's Month. And so we celebrate the women as you continue to do what is necessary in our roles to make this a great place to live, worship, work, and play. And so with that being said, I thank you, I can't thank you enough, city, uh, mayor and, and counsel for your support and the community. Uh, we live in one of the best communities in the state, uh, in the nation, and I'm so proud to live where I, I work and, and where I live. It's a great place to live, and so thank you, um, to the community for all your hard work and support to make this one of the best places to live. Thank you so much, mayor, for the opportunity.
Redd, anything? Listen, Mr. Holland, anything you wanna add or take?
Chief, do you wanna speak on anything before I speak anything on this particular thing? You, you bypassed that. Okay. I'm gonna say this, you, you know, I don't hold back on my words, man, I wanna be respectful when I'm saying this. You know, we've worked careers, I've been here almost forty years, like I say, we've had to come up with a lot of things. I remember the first time I came through, I remember in eighty-two when Jud, Judge Bellman came through, what he was talking about earlier, the things he had to go through, but what bothers me is you don't take organization like the NWCP and use it to discriminate against people of any color, black or white. It was founded in nineteen oh nine. It was founded, a lot of people don't understand about it, especially a lot of Caucasians when they hear NWCP, but that's the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. All of us in here are colored, and it was founded, it was financed through white Jewish people. I'm out of Chicago, so I'd be well to, it's a special person to me, an advocate, a great educator, and everything else. And that came about in nineteen oh nine because in the nineteen hundreds when reconstruction came in, because the freedom of slavery and abolishment wasn't fair, that these people founded this and formed it in New York. So some people might better get their stuff together when they're misusing organizations that, to build theirself up to cut other people down. It's not worth it. You know, it will backfire on you in some kind of manner, but I have never seen such a divide, you know, and we, and, and, and I'm gonna say this, I'm not gonna hold back on this, you know, we always talk about racism and discrimination, when it comes to blacks sometime in this city, the Klan can take a break 'cause blacks are destroying blacks. Now, we, we got to address that issue also. Now, when you have people on the level that we so-called supposed to be, well, we gonna talk against gang violence, and we gonna say all these things about what people are not doing, they're looking at us. They're looking at the disrespect of the mayor of this city. I care less what's felt about me at this point in time in my life, because I know I tried to do the best I could. My life has been put on the line since I've asked God to give me the ability to be a firefighter. I could, you know, as much as I love my family, I knew when I went in those environments that I may not come out, and watching those young people retire today and seeing all that, it, it blends in. So I'm going from one thing to another to look at the whole overall picture of this, of this city right now. You know, if you have the ambition and the goal to become a councilperson, and you wanna do that, you don't have to cut other people's throat to do that. You don't have to try to make them look bad, to step on their backs, to get anywhere. We got a problem, we gotta address that problem, you know, but this, like the mayor say, it's, this not the first time this has happened. This is all the time, but if the police chief can't answer the questions, what do you want there? The sheriff heard about it through the grapevine, so he showed up there.
So it wouldn't be missed.
It wasn't like he was invited, he heard about it, and he got there. Well, the chief hadn't heard about it, he was on vacation out of town. I'm out here, I'm easy, I work twenty-four seven. The mayor has always been available, other council people has been available at large, District One, District Two. You know, I understand, it, and I'm gonna tell, see, it feel like Mr. Day is leaving, so that's open house there, that's an open seat, they feel. So it's more or less, well, Mr. Day is gonna be out of the way, we'll put people in this seat here and then whatever. But if you, if you're creating chaos to come here, this city don't sleep, it runs twenty-four seven. You can't come in here, if, if, if you have the audacity to put people down that's here giving their all to make this a better city, and we're getting praise throughout this state on how this city is doing during the tough times that we have been going through, and you look right here in our city, and it's like, we're gonna hide behind this organization, one of the great organizations that was put together, and, and, and I'm not hard to find for anybody that don't like what I'm saying. This was wrong. When people fought hard to put these things together to talk about something, we can't talk about it, that'd be, just like the bashing that the chief is getting in Columbus. He didn't bring crime to Columbus. Crime was already there. You know, it's almost like he's there, but some of the things that we, we are doing here to prevent that, a lot of it from crossing the bridge, it's just like some of our people from this city, they were killed in Columbus. The last incidents, they was killed in Phoenix City. Now, let's think about that. So all the work that we can do in our preventive measures, no, we are not gonna tell you that, or you're gonna give a burglar the key to your house? You know, you need to think about that. Some things for proactive reasons, where we can make sure that we can deter crime and that we can catch people when they cross over into our city, we're not gonna get on the news and tell that. That's, that's a secret. That's how we're able to try to keep our people safe, safe over here. But I tell you this, when you start having meetings just for the sake of, of having it, you can't invite crime in. You will make those curious minds say, okay, let's cross over and let's take over this place. So we've been doing pretty good, and our department has been solving a lot of crimes right away. We would love to prevent them to where it didn't happen at all, but I don't know if anybody in this room to have that capability. But when you start, when, when I have to answer questions after a meeting, where were you at? You know, I'm, I guess I'm where I'm supposed to be, 'cause I didn't know anything about what you're talking about. You know, but I do understand why I did know and why it took place. I do understand that, you know, if you wanna build yourself up, make sure you know what you're doing, because I'm gonna come back. You know, as long as the breath in my body, I'm gonna come back at you. And you're gonna, and, and we're gonna make sure that we try to make sure we can work with Columbus, we're gonna work with the shared department, we're gonna work with the shared department in Columbus, we're gonna work with the other agencies, FBI, CIA, everybody that we can work with to keep our citizens safe. But if you're not doing that job, and you're not trying to talk to the people that's doing that job to find out, how can you be so critical of something? You know, that's, that's mainly what I have to say about it.
Well, it, it was disrespectful, and again, like I said, this is not an easy gig, and I do applaud people who wants to get into this kinda gig, but let me tell you this, and I say this, this council is not a political council, okay? This is serious business, and I keep stating that this council is thinking about the next general election. We're not making decisions trying to stay in this seat and be politician and worry about the next election. We have people's lives on stage for the betterment of this community, and we don't take it lightly. And, and so I just wanted to get it off my chest, I wanna be forthright, because if I died today, I don't want anybody saying that I was the type to throw a rock and hide my hand, and the door is open, but some of these inanigan is not appropriate. These people get beat up enough for trying to do the right thing, and when you're gonna concoct situations, that's awful. So, counsel, anything else before I?
Just to add to that, the same people that did not invite you are the ones that criticized you for not being there.
Bingo.
Now, that's, that's a double thing, so, that's, that's, no one, whether they were there or not, could not understand the philosophy behind that. I mean, that's, you know, like you said, that's hiding the fact that a meeting takes place and then being chastised and not beating that secret meeting, basically. And just so happened, some of the other officials within the county, you know, just had to care about it.
The DA found out about it too, and went.
And they, and they were able to be there.
Yeah.
And if we had heard about it and known about it, I'm sure, you know, we would too, but my point is, you shouldn't have to find out about something that you're gonna be criticized for not being there. That's the whole point of that, if you're gonna be criticized for not being there, you should have been one of the first people that was invited to have the opportunity to say yes or no, or to show up or not show up. I mean, you know, there's no other way to look at that.
That's right. If you wanna be in government and you can't recognize that the mayor is the head and the lead by our charter in this city, and a lot of the time, the mayor finds out information, and he tells me where I need to be and where I should, it should be, or if I wanna come, I have options, the same way. So he tell I need to be there, same way as the chief, same way as the assistant chief, if we need to be there.
He tells us sometime, he'll ask us sometime if there's something going on, I can't be there.
That's right.
And, and that's not his Eddie, that's his the mayor. He can't be there, can one of y'all do this for me or represent the city or whatever? And we all would do that, everybody in this room would have done that. There's nobody in this room that wouldn't have done what we're being criticized for not doing.
As bad as things are going in Columbus right now, when you see that news, you see Skip Anderson has been invited or told about something. As bad as things are going, but over here, where things are not going as bad, but at the same time, you're gonna do this and not inform the mayor? Like I say, I know my job's twenty-four seven, it don't matter what you do to me, I'm, I'm fine, but you need to tell the leader of the- I'm fine, but you need to tell the leader of this city so that he can inform all of us.
Well, one thing I say, I keep saying, Mr. Bean, you've done it, the mayor and the rest of the council. When I got invited, I thought everybody knew about it.
Yeah.
It wasn't my job to invite.
No.
It was the other folks.
You didn't know that that was going on.
I thought everybody got invited.
No, you didn't. This not on you. You didn't know that. You don't do things that way.
No, I don't.
This council is... this is a transparent character integrity council. And I will say this, anybody who wants to get in this gig, if you don't have those attributes, you're doing it for self-service, and this is not the place to be.
That's correct.
You got to give of yourself. This is not grandiose. This is not about you. Now, I applaud anyone who wants to do it for the betterment of this city, which means you got to have sacrificial leadership attributes. You got to be willing to give it all for this community, not for yourself. And if you can't do that and you want to look at me and be grandiose, this... stay where you are.
That's right.
This is serious business. So with that, I'd like to thank CTV Bean for bringing this, and I ask that we all continue to be lifters and not leaners. So with that, we do stand adjourned.